Okay, we will call to order the January 2023 meeting of the Sycamore Township Zoning Commission. My name is Roger Friedman, Chairman. Mr. Nice, if you would take the role.
Sure. Mr. Swanson, President.
Mr. Barrett, President.
Freeman, President.
Mr. Roos, President.
Very good. Thank you. We have a full board and forum present. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from the November 14th, 2022 meeting. Any changes that we need to bring to Angela's attention haven't been made already?
I sent some in prior to our last meeting. I thought they were corrected, but I noticed on page five on the vote, your vote was missing. I think that might have been one of my corrections. So maybe we should table and see if you pick up the other ones.
Okay. That's fine. We'll put those over to the February meeting. Then, excuse me, I think on our calendar for December was case number 2022-17 MA. The applicant was Landmark Recovery of Louisville LLC. And as I recall, at the request of the applicant that was put over until tonight's meeting. So Skylar, or want to give us an update on that?
Yes, sir. Actually, before we get into the the actual case, I want to introduce everyone to Jeff Yukotter. He is the Township's new planning and zoning administrator. So this is a, this is a bit of a transition night. This will be my, my last night with the zoning commission. And I actually take my new role with with Delhi Township later this week. So it's, we're rolling and we're moving. So, but yeah, since this was a, since this was a, an older case that I've been working on, I'll do the, I'll do the first case and then we'll, we'll do a bit of a, of a, I guess, a torch handoff, if you will, mid meeting. So let's get into it. The old business tonight is case 2022-17 MA. Applicant Landmark Recovery of Louisville LLC. Location of the site is 4650 East Galworth Road, and the request is a major adjustment to PUD. The surrounding, surrounding conditions, the, to the north is DD Plan Multi-Residence District. There is actually a apartment complex to the north. And then surrounding to the south, east and west is double O Planned Office District, which is predominantly medical office with some general office mixed in. And then, of course, you have to the, slightly to the south and east is, I don't know if you guys can hear me, slightly to the east and, and south is Jewish Hospital. So the site situation is approximately 3.58 acres with 300 feet of fringe on East Galworth. It is generally flat. Sloping, it's actually sloping away from East Galworth. Current ISR is point four seven six four with a proposed ISR of just over point five. Okay, the applicant is proposing to convert the existing 119-bed nursing home facility into a 132-bed inpatient substance use disorder treatment facility. This is not the first time that you have heard a, an application from this, from this group on this property. The original PUD was approved in 1997 with a, along with the zone change from B, single-family residential to double D Plan Multi-Family Residential for, for the use of the the prior existing nursing home. Later on in 2004, an entry drive was approved as part of a major adjustment. And then in late 2022, case number 2022-11 MA came in with landmark recovery with their original request for a major adjustment, which was originally 136-bed inpatient outpatient substance use disorder treatment facility, which was then modified to 160-bed inpatient only substance use disorder treatment facility. That request was denied by zoning commission and then ultimately by the board trustees. So with this application, we did request additional documentation. This was a very thorough application submitted by the, by the applicant. Included in there, I believe, over 119 pages plus plans. The applicant did submit this mid-documentation about, about their operations. So I'll go into the actual zoning compliance review. As an existing double letter PUD development zoning compliance is determined by PUD standards and the underlying zoning DD Plan Multi-Residence District. This is a change of use. The applicant's proposal states their intent to operate a 132-bed inpatient substance use disorder treatment facility and argues that the use is best categorized as a hospital use. A hospital is defined as an institution providing health services and medical or surgical care to persons primarily temporary inpatients with illness, disease, injury, deformity, or other physical or mental condition, and including as an integral part of the institution-related facilities such as laboratories, outpatient facilities, or training facilities. Hospital does not include institutions for the permanent care of or occupation by the poor, infirm, incurable, or insane. The applicant has stated that a variety of treatments ranging from medical detoxification, clinical programming, group therapy, individual therapy, and can, and continuous medical care would take place on site. As part of the comprehensive smittle, the applicant provided copies of licensure for their facilities. In Ohio, substance use disorder treatment facilities operated by the applicant are licensed by the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. The approved use indicated on the licensure is substance use disorder residential and/or withdrawal management services. Staff is guided by chapter 23 and specifically by the provisions of section 23-5 for appropriate standards in the interpretation of use. Based on the applicant's statements of the proposed use and review of uses identified in the licensure documentation, the proposed use is most consistent with the definition of a halfway house as specified by the Sycamore Township zoning resolution. Halfway house is defined as an establishment whose primary purpose is the rehabilitation of persons. Such services include drug and alcohol rehabilitation, assistance to emotionally and mentally disturbed persons, and rehabilitation for prison parolees and juveniles. Chapter three, district and zoning map. The use is permissible by, with a, excuse me, with a permitted use zoning certificate, a conditional use zoning certificate, or a planned unit development zoning certificate are summarized in the table of permissible uses found in table 3-2. The excerpt below from the table of institutional uses indicates that a halfway house is not permitted in the DD district. In summary, it is staff's final determination that the applicant's proposed use best meets the definition of a halfway house as written in chapter two of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution, and the applicant's use is not a permissible use on the subject site due to the current district designation of DD Plan Multi-Family. Land use. The adopted land use plan calls for properties in question to be used as office and the proposed use as a halfway house would be in conflict. The proposed use as submitted by the applicant would require rezoning to FF Planned Light Industrial District and is outside the scope of the current review. However, it should be noted that a zone change would be inconsistent with recently adopted land use plan, create an instance of spot zoning, and create a significant parking deficit in the applicant's proposal. Zoning authority. Chapter 19, decision-making administrative bodies and officials outlines the specific authorities granted to the zoning commission and the board of trustees for the purpose of carrying out the duties of the zoning resolution. It is clear that neither public body was granted the authority to deviate from or approve a use in conflict with the permissible use table, table dash three two, excuse me, three dash two of a Sycamore Township zoning resolution. Staff's final conclusion, based on the applicant submitted documentation, staff has determined that the proposed use is most accurately categorized as a halfway house as defined in chapter two of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution. The halfway house use is not a permissible use in the DD Plan Multi-Family District, which the applicant's site is currently zoned. Furthermore, it is clear that neither the zoning commission nor the board of trustees have the authority to grant the approval of the applicant's proposal per chapter 19. Based on the provisions of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution, staff respectfully advises denial of the application. Respectfully submitted, Skylar R. Miller.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. If you have any questions from Scott before we. If anyone is here from the applicant, if you would step up to the podium and give us your name and your affiliation. Any presentation, Jewish.
And give me just a second to get your presentation up.
Great, thank you.
Is that the same thing?
Michelle, I don't think Skylar has the chart, however.
Yeah, anything you're giving them, just let me have that for the record. Yeah, so we've, we've got the digital version, but anything else that's submitted tonight, I want you to hold on to and make sure that this is.
Good evening.
Can you, I'm sorry, before you start, can you just check and make sure that the, the presentation clerk is going to work for you? Yep, okay, you're good.
Great, thank you. Good evening, my name is Jill Tangen, and I'm a partner with Lori Seager Seymour P's out of our Columbus office. I'm here this evening on behalf of Landmark Recovery. Let Michelle introduce herself.
My name is Michelle Levert, I'm the Director of Sourcing and Zoning with Landmark Recovery.
Great, and if you'll indulge us, I think what we'd like to do is start today with sort of the elephant in the room about whether we're a halfway house or a hospital. And we would argue that this has been misclassified as a halfway house. Michelle handed to you a chart that may be helpful in sort of this discussion this evening. But I think that the essence of our, our discussion tonight is going to be around the definitions of halfway house and hospital and how they match with Ohio Revised Code and Ohio Administrative Code definitions. And I think the key in all of these definitions that we're going to talk about tonight is that a halfway house does not include inpatient or temporary housing, and it does not include medical care. Those are the two key points, and you'll notice in your definitions, those are the things that are missing from a halfway house definition versus a hospital definition. So hopefully, we can kind of frame that discussion as we move forward. The Ohio Revised Code and the Ohio Administrative Code don't use the terms halfway house or hospital when you're talking about addiction and recovery treatment. They do, however, use two definitions that are very similar to the ones that are in your code. One is for recovery housing, and one is for residential treatment setting or residential treatment facility. In recovery housing, they, it is a housing, the definition that's used in the Ohio Administrative Code is housing for individuals recovering from alcoholism or drug addiction that provides an alcohol and drug-free living environment, peer support, assistance with obtaining alcohol and drug addiction services, and other alcoholism and drug addiction recovery assistance. When you're talking about this definition, what's critical about the recovery housing definition is that it is permanent housing. That is, most people, when they're in recovery housing or in a halfway house, will sign a lease that becomes their permanent address. Halfway houses do not have medical services. They do not have licensed medical professionals on staff. They are typically peer-run, meaning they have other volunteers or other recovered alcoholics or recovered drug addiction persons, and they are running the facility, not licensed nurses, doctors, medical staff. There's very limited regulation around the halfway house. In fact, in the Ohio Revised Code, the only definition of halfway house relates to court-appointed housing, meaning a court has ordered a person following criminal behavior to be housed in a halfway house. That is not the case here. Our patients are not court-ordered or required to be here in any way. And again, most significantly, it is not a halfway house or a recovery housing. It's not a licensed substance use disorder provider in the state of Ohio. So again, when you're talking about halfway house or you're talking about recovery housing, they are locations for housing, to provide housing, permanent housing without medical care. They may have social services or something like that, that come on-site to help provide locating jobs or, you know, other essential needs, but there are not medical professionals on-site. They are not stacked 24 hours a day. In contrast, when we start talking about a hospital or your definition of hospital, your definition has two very key components that are exactly our facility. They are temporary inpatients. Our individuals are here, they are admitted, they don't sign a lease, they have medical illnesses, and they will be treated for inpatient services. And then the other part of that is that they are receiving medical care in your definition. This matches the definition that they use for residential treatment for licensed substance use disorders facilities in the Ohio Revised Code and in the Ohio Administrative Code. It is inpatient treatment for persons who have illnesses, and they are being treated by medical staff. I'm, I'm going to let Michelle talk a little bit more about the operations in this facility, but what she will assure you is that this facility is staffed 24 hours a day with licensed doctors, licensed nurses, and other medical professionals to help our patients recover. Again, they're, they're staffed 24 hours a day, they're admitted, they do not sign a lease, this is not their permanent address, so they will be cared for as they would be any other patient. And it's really notable that this facility is already a nursing home or an assisted living facility with medical staff on site. The difference between our patients and the patients at the existing nursing home is really only the type of illness. They are all receiving medical care, they are all inpatient services. To an outsider looking in, there would be no difference. You won't see any difference on the exterior of the facility. And I think that's a very critical point, and my last point before I'll turn it over to Michelle, is that our patients, any patient, person who has alcoholism or drug addiction in, under federal law, is a protected class. And that means that you cannot discriminate against them when it comes to zoning regulations. So while in Ohio, we generally assign zoning regulations to local townships, the regulations cannot conflict with the Fair Housing Act, with the Americans with Disabilities Act, or any other federal regulation. And there are specific laws that say you cannot discriminate against somebody who is an alcoholic or has drug addiction issues. So if you're making a determination that this is somehow different from the facility that exists today, I would argue you have discriminated against a protected class. So I'm going to turn it over to Michelle, let her talk now a little bit more specifically about the operations and also talk about the parking, because I know that's the substantive issue.
Sure. Well, I know you guys are already pretty familiar with landmark, so I just wanted to briefly discuss our, our operation. So our story began when Landmark Recovery was born out of a family's firsthand exposure to the prevalence of addiction and the need to move out of state to find available comprehensive treatment. Our CEO, Matt Boyle, his mother sought treatment when he was only nine years old. She was living in Louisville, and she sought treatment for alcoholism. Because of the lack of local treatment options, she had no choice but to move to Florida to get help. And since then, Mr. Boyle has made it his mission to provide licensed, accredited, evidence-based, and compassionate treatment programs throughout the country within two hours of each major metropolitan. So our mission here at Landmark is to grow extensively in the next few years. We have currently 14 facilities operating in Kentucky, Nevada, Indiana, Oklahoma, Colorado, Tennessee, Michigan, Virginia, and Ohio. And we have several more locations in Ohio yet to open in 2023. So as I mentioned, this facility is located at 4650 East Galbert Road here in Sycamore Township. The facility was previously operated as Carriage Court of Kenwood and Assisted Living Facility. It has 123 residents, 63 parking spaces, and was classified as a nursing convalescent home for purposes of parking, which required one space for every six beds and then one space for every peak staff member for a total of 61 required spaces for their operation. Now, Landmark is, is proposing to convert that facility into an inpatient substance abuse treatment facility with 132 beds. And our analysis shows, as Jill described, that we should be classified as a hospital for terms of parking. There's 63 existing spaces, and we are proposing to add 69 more spaces to comply with the requirement of one space per bed. And the, the proposed use is in line with the character of the surrounding area, which has been converted to, to mostly a medical corridor with healthcare uses in close proximity, including Jewish Hospital, Jewish Hospital Medical Building, Cincinnati General Surgeons, the Heart Institute, Kenwood Surgery Center, and other medical uses. So this adjustment will not increase in scale or intensity from the existing use. And now I'll provide you with a brief overview of the services that we would provide at this facility. We would provide medical detox and residential inpatient treatment. So, so many times, a stay at our facility begins with medical detoxification. Upon admission to our detox unit, Landmark staff performs a comprehensive history and physical exam on the patient. Further within 24 hours of admittance to our detox unit, the intake clinician or primary addiction counselor would complete a bio-psychosocial exam. And using those results in conjunction with, with information learned from an assessment prior, they would then compile a master treatment plan for the duration of the patient's stay. One thing to note is that we do not distribute methadone on site. While we detox patients from the drug, we do not use it as part of the program. So we use other less addictive drugs such as Suboxone. And a typical stay in our detox unit is between five and 10 days. It would then move to our inpatient residential treatments. And the average stay in our residential treatment program is between 28 and 35 days. Each patient would attend a full day, 10 to 12 hours of programming, which includes individual and group therapy. Our curriculum addresses trauma, life skills, boundary setting and coping skills focused on sobriety management. And then this just is a typical day in the life of, of one of our residential treatment patients. So you can see that, that we do involve smart recovery therapy, expressive therapy, and other programming such as understanding trauma. And then we do have recreational time as well. So some things to note about admissions and visitors. Landmark does not accept walk-in patients. So patients would have to complete an admissions process prior to arriving at our facility at a scheduled date and time. Visitors are not allowed unless they are invited and approved for family treatment sessions, and these are always scheduled on non-peak hours. And then the parking lot is only used for staff, as our patients are not allowed to bring vehicles of their own. Then, as it relates to security, this facility would be staffed and monitored 24/7, and patients are under continuous care and supervision by our medical staff. It will also be secured with state-of-the-art equipment, including car-only access, delayed egress door alarms, staff and video monitor interior and exterior cameras. By law, we cannot be locked down, so should a patient express their desire to leave, we have protocol in place to, to keep them, to maintain their patient status at our facility. And then our operation is subject to licensing and accreditation. We are licensed by the State of Ohio's Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. Then we are also accredited by the Joint Commission and the Commission on Accreditation of Rehabilitation. So now I will discuss the need in Ohio and Hamilton County. So one of the staggering statistics shows that only 40% of Ohioans receive treatment for behavioral health issues, and those with substance abuse disorders is far worse, with only 10% of those in need receiving treatment. So I've included some statistics on the state of Ohio. So Ohio in 2020 ranks fifth in the United States for drug overdose deaths at 5,204, amounting to 47.2 deaths per 100,000 population. And then further in Hamilton County, according to the Ohio Department of Health, Hamilton County ranks 19th out of Ohio's 88 counties for unintentional drug overdose deaths between 2015 and 2020, averaging 45.7 deaths per 100,000 people. And I've provided other statistics that show the great need here in Hamilton County. And then I just wanted to dispel some common misconceptions. So addiction centers do not raise neighborhood violence, and this is all according to studies by the Recovery Research Institute. And then they also found that spending funds on drug treatment saves on crime. Violent crime is lower near drug treatment clinics compared to other community businesses. And then studies by the National Bureau of Economic Research and Marka Watch also found that substance abuse treatment centers do not lower property values. So some of the community objectives. We have chosen this specific site because it is in line with the type of property we generally look for. Traditionally, those that have had a previous life as a subacute medical facility, assisted living or nursing home. The layout is easily adapted for our use, allowing us to keep construction costs down and ultimately maintain a fair fee schedule for our patients. Additionally, we will bring approximately 100 new jobs to the area with an average salary of approximately $60,000 per year. So in summary, we've shown that the facility would be located in a compatible healthcare sector and comparable to the existing land use. That through the severe prevalence of substance abuse in the state of Ohio identified in the state, county, and federal governments, there continues to be a significant need for the proposed services. The proposed services, in addition to existing parking, will meet our needs and cause minimal disruption during construction and that the proposed use will achieve the economic development goals of Sycamore Township. And I thank you guys for your time, and if you have any questions, please let us know.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone on the mission have any questions for the answer here?
I have one. You said there's no linkage with courts and no, none of your patients are ordered into your treatment facility. It's all privately.
Correct. So our patients are there voluntarily. So we don't contract with the courts for patients.
Thank you. If there's anyone else here who wishes to speak on behalf of the applicant or offer any comments on the application. Again, if you would come up to the podium, give us your name and any comments that you wish to make.
Before I begin, I'd like to thank Skylar for her service to the Sycamore Township. And Jeff, welcome to a great township.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Yes. My name is Susan Weeks. I live at seventy-nine seventy Mary Maker Lane. Four five two three six. I live a block, actually a block and across the street from the, the current facility. And I've, I've come, I was here the last meeting, but I come with two concerns. My background, I taught nursing and worked in nursing for forty-four years. I have graduate degrees from Ohio State and I've worked, had some graduate work at University of Dayton also. I've worked in every area of nursing, including the homeless coalition, the old area where the homeless were. We had a nurse clinic down there for ten years. I've worked and taught in OB. I've taught pediatrics, maternity, geriatrics, nursing homes. I've been in so many nursing homes also. So I'm really acquainted with this whole area of concern. I have two major concerns. One is that, and I understand there are rules that the zoning commission needs to follow. I understand that. I bring the perspective about good patient care and safety and safety of the nursing and safety of the neighborhood. I have a letter, if you would let me read this. Carol Martini has been a longstanding proponent of our safe neighborhood and her husband's funeral was yesterday. So she wrote a letter and she asked me if I would read it and I will go ahead to do that. As I am unable to attend this meeting in person, I would like to submit my opinion about this real estate transfer in writing. I have lived in the, in the same house for sixty-one years up until January the first two thousand twenty-three. I lived there with my husband, Joe Martini. As some of you know, Joe passed away at the beautiful age of ninety-two on January the first. We moved into this unincorporated area in nineteen fifty-eight. It was, it still is a beautiful neighborhood where the word neighbor still has its true meaning. We have enough medical facilities, hospitals, and corporate office buildings. We want to hold on to this area as a neighborhood. Nothing has been mentioned about our neighborhood across the street and behind the nephrology center. I want to tell you, I want to hold, we certainly don't want a convalescent home for drug and alcoholic patients to change the character, the dynamics of this neighborhood. Landmark Recovery wants to call this facility a hospital with hundred and thirty-two beds. It's not a hospital. It's a halfway house for drug, alcohol, and mentally disturbed people. Also, it could house individuals, and this has been spoken to individuals and prison parolees. Many of these people are placed in halfway houses by the court. This is a neighborhood of seniors, young children, teens, et cetera. Let's keep it one of the few neighborhoods left in this area. We don't want to have to worry about halfway houses, halfway house residents in our neighborhoods. We have a concern for all of these people, that this is not the, this is not the place where they belong. I, I concur with most of that, although we've heard some changes in it. I also want to stress as a health professional, longtime health professional, we do support treatment for people with drug addiction and mental health issues for sure. We know that's one of the major, those are major problem, health problems in, in the United States and the world. Anyhow, those are my two concerns. One is protecting our neighborhood. And I'm not so sure, I would like to see the details of that study that was done. The crime does not increase in neighborhoods with such facilities. And I also want to make sure that the people getting the care, I think from the last time, the average salary has been, that you, that you addressed has been really increased in amount. I think the last time was like thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars, now it's sixty thousand dollars. I know there's a huge shortage of nurses, a huge shortage of nurses and facilitate, facilitate. As facilitators. And so I'm not sure that those salaries, even the sixty thousand dollar a year salary is commensurate with the, with the required. So I'm, I'm concerned about the treatment, the amount of care and about the neighborhood. And I, I don't have anything else. Thank you for listening to me. And again, welcome.
Ma'am, a couple of things. Can you read the name and address of the, of the letter writer?
Sure. Carol Martini, eighty ninety-eight Mary Maker.
Thank you, ma'am. And can I have a copy of that letter for the record? Do you want the original back or can we have it?
I think a back please.
Okay. Kevin, can you make copy of this, please?
Not many of our folks are here tonight. We have, had two deaths in the two block area. And both funerals were yesterday. So it's, you know, we've been involved in taking care of our neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, I, I, I would like to interject just for a moment to the, to the commission. While members of the public can, can speak and give their opinions on any matters, I'd request that the zoning commission keep their, their decision-making focused on, on strictly zoning matters. So I realize we have to, we have to filter and put guardrails on ourselves, but that's, that's, that's part of our job tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak with regard to this application? If you would step up to the podium, give us your name and affiliation, anyone. See, nothing. Anyone else have any comments or questions that they'd like to raise?
I'm just not clear on definitions. The last time we had a discussion was about parking. It seems like the parking's been satisfied. And I'm just not really clear. There seems to be some confusion on definitions.
Kind of get the same concern if I can later on to that, I guess. The, we heard, I guess, more of a legal approach to applicant's side. And looking at the staff report, you referenced the language. Has our township attorney been involved in discussions regarding the interpretation that you have in the staff?
Yes, sir. And the, the staff report that is submitted to the zoning commission tonight has been fully reviewed and approved by, by the law director. As far as use, the original application came in with a different set of information. You know, during, during the course of the, the original application, the, the actual use and proposal of what was gonna, you know, what activities were going to take place on the site, it changed over, kind of evolved over the course of, of the meetings that we had. There was also a request for licensure documentation that we never received during, during that original application. So it's not necessarily that we made a final determination it was a hospital. We said, we just simply said, even at the hospital use standard, the, the parking did not meet the criteria. The applicant submitted a very comprehensive application this time. Again, over a hundred and nineteen pages with, with their plans, which did include examples of their licensure. That has been reviewed by township staff, township law director. And based on that additional information, we did look at both the definition of a hospital and, and halfway house. I, I realize the, the term halfway house has certain connotations, but that's, that's not the focal point of the definition. Call it, call it the strawberry shortcake house. It, it's, it's the definition that we're applying to, to the applicant's use. If we're looking at these two definitions, it is staff's determination. And it's also staff sole determinate, sole authority within the zoning resolution to make this determination that it, it fits the definition of a halfway house. Because it fits that definition better than any other definition, that's what we applied to the use table. And this is, this is the basis for the determination tonight.
So what you're saying is you really don't have the authority to, to make that determination.
That is, that's the opinion of staff and law director. As, as far as the information that has been submitted tonight, this obviously has not been reviewed. It, it will be thoroughly reviewed and vetted as part of any, any application process moving forward. Now, I, I can tell you what, what the, what the state or any other agency calls a halfway house is not necessarily going to be the same definition. It is, it is the definition component that, that, that meets that term halfway house. Don't focus on, don't focus on the term, focus on the definition. And that's what we had to do. So. You know, the applicant, the applicant made mention of, you know, you know, permanent residence. And, and other terms that, that may be used at the state level. Thanks, sir. That, that is not, that is not a component of, of our definition of halfway house. So if I'm looking at these two definitions and I'm looking at the applicant, the applicant's proposal tonight, between these two definitions, it's a halfway house. That does not fit and that, that, that is not a principal permitted use in that district. It cannot be added to the district in any, any meaningful or, or legal way. That is, that's effectively spot zoning. I do not believe that it is a discriminatory practice to make that determination. There are other districts within the Sycamore Township, within Sycamore Township that allow for halfway houses that this particular use would be approved in. I've had meetings with, with the applicant. Their, their use is, you know, what, what the activity that they're, that they're talking about is admirable. There's, there is certainly a need, if, if not in Sycamore Township, certainly in the region. You know, I, I do wish them the best, but it's, it's the right use and the, the right location. Based on the current zoning, based on our use table, this is not the location for them. So staff is, again, respectfully advising, advising zoning commission to deny the application.
You're clarifying that this is not a reason of the application. So we're not considering that.
The applicant has not requested a reason to, to a double F district. That has not been considered. It is outside the scope of this review.
And that would be required for it to be a permissible use as a hospital or as?
No, a hospital is a, is a, is a permitted use in this district. But it is not a hospital based on, based on staff determination in which staff has the sole, the sole authority by our resolution to make that determination.
So, excuse me, just a little, um, couple of questions. You indicated that, think that the residents, what was the length of stay that, that you were talking about?
Typically, our inpatient treatment program would be between twenty-eight and thirty-five days.
Have you go, what, what, what would you say is the outside number of days that someone might be a resident there?
It really depends on insurance, but I would say forty is max.
Okay. And, and is, is the rehabilitation of someone coming in as, as a resident, that's part of your program?
I mean, I guess that now, what do we define rehabilitation as?
Do you view rehabilitation as part of your program?
Our program is medical care.
It's much more than medical care, isn't it?
It's inpatient medical care for the treatment of substance abuse.
I assume at the existing nursing home, there are also ancillary services that are provided there as well. I'm sure they have therapy, they have exercise classes, they have all kinds of other ancillary programs. They may also have social services and other ancillary programs and therapy, but they have full-time medical care. And based solely on your definition, even outside anything else that I have said, your definition of hospital says medical care. Your definition of halfway house does not. And to the extent it's vague, I'm sure you've all already been advised, anytime there's zoning regulations that are vague, they have to be construed in favor of the landowner. That's Ohio law.
Thank you.
And if I could just point out, our prior application was denied solely on the basis of parking compliance with us being classified as a hospital.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
I don't know what to do with this. I have an opinion, but it, it feels like it's more of a legal definition that is being put forward to decide this more than anything. So I'm not sure where to go.
Well, we have to make some motion either to consider it or not to consider it.
Make a motion to consider the case.
Second. Second by Mr. Barry. Any further comments? Yeah, and I'm, I'm not here to render a legal opinion, but you know, it's, it's been presented to us. And quite frankly, you know, looking at it, you know, I, I view it as more of a falling within the definition of halfway house as opposed to a hospital, but I'm not here to opine on that. Given the position of the staff and the fact that they have had their separate legal counsel look at it, I, I think we, at this point, take the advice that it is a halfway house and make a determination based upon it. There are no other comments, Mr. Mees, if you would take the role.
Sure. Mr. Swanson? Hi. Now.
No.
Mr. Roots? No.
This goes, this does go to the trustees, correct?
Yes, sir. It should be, it's tentatively scheduled for their first meeting in February. And we will review the additional documentation that was submitted tonight and revise staff comments accordingly.
Thank you. So you're ready?
Okay, new business. We have case number twenty twenty-two that E T Z. The applicant is Capital Investment Development Group LLC. It's for property located at one one six eight zero Grooms Road. Two ninety East Kemper Road, six seven one one East Kemper Road, one one six zero four Grooms Road, and it's six nine six three East Kemper Road. One one six zero four Grooms Road and it's six nine six three East Kemper Road. The request is for a zone change and a DUD two.
All right.
Anything off the range here?
I am, I am officially handing over the baton.
You're out of here.
Uh no, I'm not out of here. I'll 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 stick around. I'll I'll watch uh I'll I'll get the popcorn and and spectate. Yeah, that's right. Uh let's see here. So open up this zoom tab right here and hit share screen. The big bu- big blue button down there you go. Share screen, right? And you are gonna type in. You're gonna type in that sharing key right there. And then minimize that. There you go, it's on yours.
You're good. Take it away. Mr. Chairman, Board, thank you. Uh good, my name is Jeff Yu-Kata. I'm a planning and zoning administrator. This is a zone change from light proposal from light F light industrial district two. It's actually DD planned multifamily, so it's an SPOD. Um the applicant is Capital Investment Development Group or CIG. Um the the location is, it's on Grooms Road, that kind of the root parcel is zero or zero six zero zero one uh four, and then it's the following parcels of of the of the ending of those of zero zero two zero 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 one one, uh zero 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 one two, zero 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 one four, and zero 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 one seven. Again, the proposed use is DD planned multifamily SPOD. And the current zoning, like I said, is if is F light industrial, it's predominantly vacant lands since it was cleared in two thousand nineteen. Uh prior to two thousand nineteen, there were various light industrial uses. There was also a trailer park use, which is now vacated. Um to the north, surrounding conditions, you have Interstate two seventy-five, I two seventy-five. To the east, again, you have Interstate I two seventy-five. Um to the south, uh it's a Blue Ash zoning, it's industrial uses. The majority of of that property is uh used by ODOT in the Kinnwood County um for their uh maintenance uh operations. To the west, you have O Office, A two single family, and F light industrial. Um site characteristics, so that's sort of sizes a little over uh over seventeen point two five eight acres or seven hundred fifty one thousand seven hundred sixty-eight square feet. Um seven hundred and seventy or so square or linear feet um frontage along Grooms Road and then um just under eight uh well, one thousand seven hundred fifty-nine feet along I two seventy-five. Um the topography. It's kind of impressive driving on the highway. It's it's really two predominant development plateaus in the center of the property. Um it drops down into what is the east branch of the Sharon Creek. So this uh repair and zone runs westwardly towards Sharon Lake. Um ISR is not a factor here because it's a it's a multifamily use. Um the maximum um density or uh drawings pretty big acre or fourteen point five. Um more than that would require eventual specific um work trustee approval. So I'll get the land use plan in a second. Um the proposal, the applicant is proposing a well landscaped identity residential use. A total of nine detached um family housing facilities, depending on grade, the units are three to four stories. Uh max height is fifty-four feet. Um total uh units, three hundred ninety-two. Uh joint units breakers, twenty-two point seven one four. Um the noted floor area for the site is one hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred fifty square feet. Um the units range from five hundred square feet um to around thirteen hundred square feet for uh a three bedroom product. Uh standard parking, there's six hundred and sixteen spaces um with fourteen handicap uh spaces or six hundred and thirty. Um there are six proposed signs, proposed amenities, a clubhouse and a well landscaped uh property. Uh one thing I note with this um use, it it is well landscaped and the CIG was another, uh of course, the gallery there on the Kenwood uh road. Um very similar landscape plan in terms of quality. Um in terms of building materials, I like to get into that. Um it's very nice for the exterior finishes. There's a mixture of vertical and horizontal, a four inch, seven inch and since that's his twelve foot, it's twelve inch fiber cement lap siding is shown. Um this variety of products produces an appealing and modern aesthetic. Um with that, in my experience, there's perhaps wider siding can um maybe it's a little bit more aesthetically appealing, kind of a wider uh lap siding. Our recommendation was to perhaps uh consider the incorporation of more twelve inch vertical elements. Um and the deletion of some four inch elements perhaps on the building bump out. So some of the bump outs you'll see, which we'll go through. One of the bump outs will be the twelve inch vertical, but the others are the smaller siding. Um legislative findings. So the site arrangement of this plan delivers innovative and an efficient use of land. Um this development assures a harmonious relationship with existing and potential development of the surrounding area. Um this residential use provides for a residential housing option in the proximity um to a concentration of nearby jobs. Um one plausible negative consequence of the township not considering this rezoning proposal is the potential annexation of the subject property um by um the city of Blue Ash or the city of Sharonville. This was not an over operation or a over observation by the applicant, but the fact remains, it's it's right there on the kind of that point between Sharonville and Blue Ash. That's a real um factor that ought to be considered. Staff ultimately does not have a concern related to the density of this proposed development, given its proximity to I two I two seventy-five and the adjacent surrounding uses of higher density. Um with the land use plan, land use plan does call for office. Um but and 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 one area of the um land you span the the policy area, it does, it does consider office. Um but with the current market conditions, um and currently with what the um owner of the property wants to do. You know, this is not that. It's higher density residential. Um just for some um stats related to lot area ball and yard requirements for the DDSPOD. The minimum lot width is is a hundred feet. This will exceeds it. Seven hundred and seventy feet along Grooms and uh one thousand seven hundred fifty-nine along I two seventy-five. The proposed setbacks on Grooms Road are forty feet and about twenty-nine feet off I two seventy-five. The minimum front yard requirement is is thirty feet. For this property, I kind of considered I two seventy-five and Grooms. You kind of have two front yards. It's kind of a a unique shape, but um that's why I applied that standard for that. Um for rear yard requirement, and that's to the um south uh where the Blue Ash uh property is, it's twenty-two feet. Um for this SPD, uh DDSPOD, the maximum principal building height is three point five stories or forty-five feet. Here, it's proposed to be four stories with a pitch roof or fifty-four feet tall. Um chapter twelve, parking. I was looking for a um kind of a roster from the developer and I imagine we'll get that, but the parking looks sufficient from a from kind of an eye test, but the requirement is one point five spaces for one bedroom and two spaces for a two plus bedroom unit. Like I said, six hundred and thirty parking spaces are provided, so we'll look for a unit roster um at twenty-four feet wide. Iowa's are sufficient. Um the parking typical parking spaces are shown at um nine feet by eighteen feet. The code calls for nine feet by nineteen feet, nineteen foot spaces. Um related to curbing or curb stops, um the code requires that detail. Um related to dumpster enclosures, there's one dumpster pit shown. We would just look for an enclosure. A masonry um plus gated dumpster enclosure for that. Illumination, all outdoor lighting shall be designed and located um with a maximum illumination of a point five foot candles at the property line. Um they did provide a photometric plan, but it it just needs to be revised back a little bit. Um related to permanent signs, six permanent signs are noted uh with promote proposed dimensions. Um all final design has not been reviewed. Uh there are submitted dimensions. And it's recommended that the maximum sign allotment, um that would be the maximum sign allotment allowed. There are at the southern ingress and egress point, there is a double monument sign location on each side of the ingress. We would just want a little bit more detail on that. Um related to landscaping and boundary buffers, um the applicant provided a a nice landscape plan. There might be a few themes that might be similar to the gallery plan where um perhaps it could be revised to um you see this sometimes with supply and demand. It it's a good plan, but sometimes you can revise the plan. It's just gonna be easier on the developer so that, you know, they're not gonna have to go to Cleveland or Oregon to find these trees, uh the find stock around here type of thing. So with site arrangement consideration, so I just kind of consider this the um kind of what I laid out, kind of the uh rec- kind of the recommendations and considerations I would put in perhaps a a recommendation with conditions. I'll get to that at the back part of this, the last page here. Um related to outside agency comments, we're still pending a lot of comments. Um I do want to note MSD MSD reports that sewer capacity is not available. Um applicant shall resolve this matter with MSD and I have that uh PDF here if anyone would like to see it. Um related to um Hamlet County Soil and Water Conservation, um received a conditional approval subject to standard soil and water conservation practices. Um related to the Sycamore Fire Township Fire and EMS, there is no concerns noted at this time, however. Um this plan will be subject to further review. Um but Planning and Development Stormwater Division, um ODOT, Hamlet County Engineer, um Duke and Cincinnati Water Works, we've not heard from. Um with that, staff recommends the approval of case uh uh two thousand twenty-two dash eighteen Z consistent with the sign arrangement consideration. Staff recommends a motion to approve with the following conditions, a unit roster for this development roster of unit, oh. Do you get to the recommendation and conditions at the end or do you want me to read those now?
Now, yeah, so you're recommending approval with the following conditions.
That's right.
Okay.
Um a unit roster for this development, which is a roster of unit sizes, shall be provided so that required analysis determines sufficient parking counts can be performed. A typical, uh that's one. Two, a typical uh parking space size shall be nine by nineteen feet, consistent with chapter twelve of the Sycamore Township's zoning resolution. Three curb stop locations and placement or curb location in detail shall be provided, consistent with chapter twelve of the Sycamore Township zoning resolution. Or staff would like to work with the applicant to address and amend several elements, um such as species selection and or site arrangement of the landscape plan prior to the board of uh trustees meeting. Um five, all sign elevation shall be provided prior to the board trustees meeting at the southern ingress and egress point. A double monument sign is shown. Please provide detail on this element. Six, a detail of the masonry and gated dumpster enclosure shall be provided. And seven, applicant shall provide a lighting plan, uh meeting the point zero five uh foot candle standard at all property line.
Point five.
Point five.
Point five foot candle.
Not a hundred and ten.
Yeah.
And so with that, that is my um I will just, you know, dodge by, kind of scroll through the just some of the plans. Here's the, here's the plan. As I noted, there's kind of two plateaus here. Um one on the kind of northern side and then the southern end here. Um here's kind of the grade of signs that they're looking to propose. It's very nice. Um I would say consistent with uh gallery. Um here's the topo plan. Um here's the landscape plan. It's it's a very good plan, um detailed. I think we would just want to make sure the um we kind of get the species down so they can provide the plants from stock um located here. It's easier better for all parties. So that, this is the colorized uh plan or the uh detail. There's kind of the units, um kind of the floor plan. Here is the detail related to the elevations.
Click on this arrow and get rid of that. Yeah.
So I am not an architect by any means, but when I, and and this is very nice, but when I looked at this, um it jumped out at me that one of these bump outs has that that larger wide twelve inch vertical um uh board and batten siding, and then you have the smaller uh siding here. Um and so just kind of a food for thought thing. I was like, yeah, you know, it might be good to look at the wider. This is kind of the three story, determine how the how the grade is. Um on the four story, they do show this vertical, a nice vertical siding on the first floor of these. If it's in this one, yes, here we go. So down here, um on the, on the, on the, the the four story side of the building, they do show, you know, where the grade can handle it. They show that that first uh story showing that wider. Uh board and batten siding. And here, just to, just to note, it's just the um you know, the, it just caught my eye with the wider or the bad. And here's the clubhouse. It's um staff had no recommendations here, but it's that wider twelve inch board and batten than a kind of a brick element. Um with that, that is my report.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Um and
I've got a question. Yes, on the uh minimum rear yard requirement of thirty feet, there was twenty-two feet. Or is that a type of back of minimum rear yard requirement, thirty feet?
Well, I'll I'll go back to gallery when I review. I reviewed gallery, so it's just similar developer and on that one, on happiness. I I don't have the them in front of me, but it was a substantial um reduction and setback. So on these uh SPODs, I I don't think it's uncommon to have setbacks and are totally con- conforming. That's the beauty of of a PUD, but let me go. Scary, yeah.
I I want to talk so bad, but I also, I also want to keep my mouth shut.
No, say it, say it. Speak.
Well, uh ju- just uh just to uh uh kind of go along and and compliment what Mr. Yu-Kata are saying. Um you know, this, this is an interesting site because of the two plateaus, you know, you have, you have this uh the the streamline running through it. I I think the, I think the applicant is, uh obviously, this is not the same high intensity as, you know, the Kenwood development. Uh there's more room to spread out. I think they're, I think they're doing a a a good job of utilizing um you know, the the topography of this site and, you know, allowing for for the site to kind of roll across the the natural landscape. You know, um you know, they're backing, uh you know, they're uh you know, reducing setbacks uh, you know, up against property lines where it's not necessarily, there's there's no impact while still, you know, taking advantage of of those green spaces. So um again, it's not, a- as Mr. Yu-Kata said, it's not perfect as far as standard code, but because it's yet uh an SPOD, they're they're better to, they're they're better taking advantage of you know, the natural features on this site while still getting the their desired uh uh density.
And and just to take off that, um I consider, I think it would be reasonable perhaps to consider this um elevation here, the southern elevation. This is Blue Ash here. Um over here is ODOT and county maintenance facilities. Theoretically, you could call that a side yard, but for this um exercise, I consider it a a rear yard. And then that's where the twenty-two feet came from. Um you know, one thing the board could certainly consider, and perhaps the trustees would be, you know, maybe, you know, you can use vegetative buffers and screens to buffer out uh, you know, uses if if there's some concern with uh, you know, the the kind of the uh county ODOT industrial use there. Um there is a, an existing tree line to the south a little bit, looks like. Um so it might be tough with, even though it is a southern exposure, it might be a little tough getting sunlight to some screening elements. Um you know, a fence would, you know, could be considered too, but that's that's where that.
Okay. There are no other questions or comments. If anyone is here or the applicant uh wishes to speak, if you would step up to the podium and give us your name and your affiliate.
Uh thank you guys. Uh Christian Dial with CIG Communities, um Vice President of Development. Representing us tonight, I have also brought with us uh some other consultant team members. Uh my associate, Danny McKelvey, and um our legal counsel, Barry Tollis is here as well. Um wanted to thank staff for their report on the proposal we made here. Um as as mentioned, it's it's not exactly tailored towards what the Sycamore Township zoning code specifies in every uh detail, but what the PUD route that gives a little more flexibility to a design project that detail, but what the PUD route that gives a little more flexibility to a design project that is a better, better fit for the features of the site. And just because it was my recent comment, the, the thought behind doing a twenty two foot setback on the rear yards is to set everything off of the, we set everything off of the front yard by exceeding the minimums of that, and it just gives more of a expansive view shed on Grimms Road as you're driving by by doing that. I wanted to just be here to, to answer any specific questions as it relates to your guys' review of the plan. I also speak to some of the conditions, the conditions for considerations that were, came up in the staff report. The six hundred and thirty parking spaces, we, we will email and provide a unit roster to you guys and as you'll be able to determine from reviewing that, that there's with the percentage of studios and one bedrooms associated with the unit mix that we felt very comfortable with the, the parking count, and it's coming on us to make sure that the parking works there because that's the, that's part of the long-term success of the community itself. So we're one, we're just over one point six, and we feel like that is, is adequate based off the demands that we charted out for that. The parking spaces, nineteen foot, we, we have eighteen foot that parking spaces and most of our spaces at the gallery. And we see eighteen foot spaces being typical and, and others owning codes that we work in. And because of the residential use of the site, there's not as much coming and going as there might be in a commercial setting and where there's a lot more cars backing out into each other, and we feel like that we can look at extending that and are open to it, but it would also come in detriment of landscaped area and, and green space on the site, so we would just like to say that.
I, I think, I think our standard, our dimension specification versus what you have, they may actually be the same, we're just using slightly different standards for the basis of measurement, so what we may, what we probably want to do is just sit down and let's see, let's see your parking detail for a space, and it's probably going to meet our overall dimension standards without any modification. So because we actually, where the curb stop is, we actually allow, there's additional depth, that's, that's allowed from that. So that's come into play before. So it, it's really, I think we just have to sync up our terminology and make sure that we're talking about the same thing, but the plan did indicate the, the nine by eighteen, so we wanted to clarify that in the staff, staff report.
Thanks.
We'll nail that down.
Okay, great. That makes sense. So then we will provide curb stop locations. We were, will also make admission to any supplemental reviews that need to be done before the trustees meeting, we're, we're making it a goal and will achieve the goal of getting you all this additional detail within seven days of this meeting. We also will provide the elevations details of the monument signs and go sit down with staff to just make sure that you guys are, are happy with that design. And I'm not an architect either, but my opinion is that the vertical setting looks better on those bump outs as well, so it's, that's an easy switch of material and you know, that, that is it's, it's preference at some, but I also think that's what I see and it probably blends in better with the neighborhoods around here and and I like how the elevations and the project itself is, is more residential looking in nature and looking like some of the materials you'd see on single family homes that are built.
And to, to the board, I was looking, I actually omitted a condition for to consider materials considering the twelve inch vertical siding, so I would just add that as an eighth.
That's something that I, I think we're, we're amenable to. And and then as, as it relates to Metropolitan Sewer District, Adam is here to speak any specifics, but my high level understanding of it is, so we worked with MSD to get the availability request, there's a lift station on site. Lift station as it stands today is, is not able to receive this many units, depending on what the bedroom sizes are. And we're working with them to determine what upgrades might be needed to the lift station, and that would be on us to, to make those improvements to lift station, however, there is downstream capacity for this development, so it's just a site-specific issue of capacity, not that, that we're going to bombard the downstream capacity, so I, I think that's worth noting. You know, like I said, there's still a lot of comments pending from the other departments, but you know, as, as going through this with gallery Kenwood and, and the rigorous process of, of working through the county with that, and then other developments we've experienced with working with the different county departments. We are, are already in, in the works and making sure we're having supplemental meetings with all those department heads to make sure that the development meets that, the criteria that they are, are now enforcing in, in every development. And overall, we, we look forward to unlocking some economic potential on a, on a underutilized site that I think, I think would fit for a light industrial, but there's also a, a really big need for housing in this area. And, and service the, the workforce in this area. And as a local developer and local company living just down the street in Kenwood, I'm, I'm proud to be doing work in our own backyard that, that is good for, for, for the development of the area and is also something that we can, you know, build a reputation on.
Any questions?
I have one, what is the timeline for building out this, these buildings?
So from zoning approval, it takes about nine months to further design and develop the plans fully. And then, so say that's ten, eleven months from now. From that, we were going to break up a phase on the, the south side of the creek as phase one, and then begin construction on phase two, basically when the, when phase one is completed, just because from a project size, it's extreme, three hundred ninety-two units is really difficult to get done all at once, and the site set itself up really well to be phased like that. So we would expect the first phase to be completed from start of construction in about a twenty-two month period. And with units being delivered before the end of that twenty-two months because of how the buildings are separated, and then it would take an additional fourteen months to build out the buildings once that started on the second phase. But I don't think we would wait until twenty-two months is complete to, to start the second phase, so all in all, I would say roughly thirty-six month timeline for everything. It's, it's a safe bet, and you know, we're dealing with a lot of issues and, and supply chains and labor force and the world's seen a lot of, a lot of things go haywire in the last couple of years, that sometimes you just have to roll with the changes that happen in the field, but from, from what we've seen on other projects, that's what I would expect there.
More, more if I may, but two questions on the, I noticed there was one dumpster enclosure, which is right here. What is the waste management practice for this site, does each kind of site have their own general like sub repository and then staff basically brings it to here, what's kind of the practice in terms of trash?
Yeah, and Greg and I, Greg's my partner and is working on this plan with me, he couldn't be here tonight, but we, we looked at that in more detail, and I, I think it makes sense to also show a dumpster location on the north parcel as well, just to make sure that there's not, that there's sufficient capacity on, on both sides of the site. And we will provide an elevation detail for those. What happens typically in these buildings is we hire a valet trash company that will actually do all the collections for the residents inside the buildings, and then they are responsible for, for taking it out to the dumpster enclosures, so there's not, you know, just one guy taking his trash and
Right. But, but, yeah, so there's, there's actually an internal internal refuse room.
Correct.
To teach.
Correct, or sometimes what happens is they, we have a specific, so we have a valet trash as, as the contractor, they have like a bag that they supply to all the residents, and then they, we have a schedule that we say valet trash comes here for pickup at ten AM on Tuesdays and Thursdays. If you have trash, you leave it out right outside your door during those periods of time. And then we, they, they pick it all up and then take it out there, and it's it's, it's kind of the new way of handling trash. We, we've kind of gone away from trash chutes and dumpsters and buildings because of this trash service companies that have become available because those rooms just get disgusting after a while, and we feel like the more we take it out of the residents' hands, the nicer the community stays.
So there's not, there's not additional dump, minus the one on the north, the north side of the property, you're not talking about having more individual dumpsters or, or can bins, you know, located.
Wonderful, for the next phase, could you, this might be a condition, provide a revised site plan showing the location of that.
Yeah, we'll get to that this week.
Okay, great, and I think we would look for it, this would be condition ten, just a, it would be a very simple phase map. And it's really for the trustees application, so you kind of bubble phase one, bubble phase two, and that's
Yeah, yeah, for, for this commission, the best side is the north of the creek line, which is the hash line through the middle of the site. We just feel like from a natural feature standpoint, that made the most sense to divide the phase up.
My last question is color, did you guys plan to go with a kind of a gallery color scheme for, you know, because on the elevations, they show white, or do you provide, or do you plan to go after some color?
Yeah, so we, we had to put something down, what we do is after we have zoning approved on projects, it's when we fully engage the rest of the design team. We have an interior designer company that we use on all of our projects that we actually let do a final selection of the colors on with, with our approval, she's a lot more she has a better eye for color schemes on the exteriors of buildings, she's the one that ended up coming up with color scheme for Spire Kenwood and all the color schemes that were carried from inside the building into out, so we would engage her on this project as well. And that's something that we could also make a condition that we, you know, check back in with staff to look at final color selections as well. We've had a really positive experience of working with staff at Sycamore Township, and we know that you guys are just trying to do your job to make sure that things are developed in a quality way and, and the township, and that overall helps everybody else that's investing and, and building life in Sycamore Township, so.
Question, what market are these units in?
Um, that's a great question. Really, it's, it's everyone, everyone is available, fair housing requires to not be specific to any sort of demographic, but we are seeing, you know, renters by choice coming all different shapes and sizes. We, we see a young professional that is got a new job in, in supply chain management or something that wants to be close to their job, they, they sometimes rent an apartment. We see a lot of people that are downsizing from homes and they are sitting out in the housing market right now because of the craziness with interest rates or, or home prices, and they're you know, just want somewhere to land that's in the area that they're familiar with for a while. It's all different walks of life, honestly, but it never surprises me that how many people need these, these homes, and it's testament to how quickly, you know, Aspire leased up, it, it, you know, leased up at a record pace we've never seen before. And this, this, we still feel like there's demand for quality housing within the two seventy-five loop, not just Sycamore Township, but it gets people into town easy, or, or even in the immediate area to jobs and the places that they want to go.
I, I'm, I'm going to make some assumptions about, about that question. I, I think we're trying to gauge and, and maybe do some comparison with Aspire, I know Aspire is renting for over two dollars a square foot for a month.
Yeah.
What, so it's, it's not quite a zoning question, it's just a general discussion about the development, what, what type of price point do you see these hitting?
Yeah, so market rents, we would expect for this, this location are still north of two dollars per square foot. They might range a little bit less than that on the biggest units, but that you're still looking at a three thousand dollar plus a month unit for three bedroom. We, we, quite frankly, Aspire is probably the highest rents per square foot and highest rent per month outside of the downtown core. Which, you know, sitting here today, it, it surprised me a little bit, but we, yeah, I would say that right now, that's where the market's at for here, and we're, we expect to be higher than some of the stuff that's out more towards Deerfield or, or Mason or Westchester even, but they're, they're kind of showing us a little bit of guidance on what the market is for this.
Are any of these units public assistance units?
No.
Just one question related to the architecture, Aspire has a flat roof and those, you know, present some maintenance maybe challenges later on.
Yeah.
This has more of a slope roof, it was the slope roof a the consideration of, you know, and aesthetic is subjective, but it was the slope roof a consideration based on you know, the material costs and what you, what you thought you could bring back, or did you consider more of a kind of that flat roof product that you're seeing come up, you know, different than gallery?
Yeah, I, I would say at this location, it was just, again, right or wrong, it was kind of an architectural election to do pitch roofs and even though the zoning code maxes out at fourteen and a half units, twenty-two to twenty-three units per acre is actually relatively low density per acre and, and way things are built now. And, and other places that we're working, and so with that lower density, we try to do design that feels lower density and feels more residential and neighbor, and like, like a, almost like a single family extension, that's a good transition to that, so the pitch roofs kind of bring that element, in our opinion, to that a little bit more, flat roofs are a little more modern in their appearance, and we've seen some two, three story stuff in Florida that, in places we work where that, that works, but I feel like Sycamore Township and, and at least the residential settings, you know, still presents itself as kind of a more traditional or transitional housing styles.
Yeah. Yeah, two questions, one more technical nature, I think, if I noticed on the application, the landowner had not signed off on this application, is that correct?
Uh, I don't, so he didn't sign on the application itself, but we do have, we do have confirmation from the landowner, he is, he is a partner in this application.
And then more of a planning aspect here, I don't see on the plans, and maybe they're too small, but do you have any pedestrian connection from the north building down to the rec center? If I'm living in one of those units, I will walk to the rec center, is it possible?
Yeah, I think the intent is that landscape plan, if we could scroll to that one. To answer your question, I was looking at it, we're going to provide a pedestrian connection at some, at some place for that. At the place that we think that makes the most sense, we have not yet determined. We can, we can figure out that detail and show something, but there's also some workings that we will have to, anything that's going to be placed or footers that are being placed in that stream that to make sure that we're working out on the environmental side as well. But we, we think it makes a lot of sense to create a pedestrian connection there as well, just to give people easier access to the memories.
Seems like it could be out along Grimms Road if necessary, also, I'm not sure what the topography is there, but
Certainly, certainly better than anywhere else along the, that, that streamline, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think when we looked at it internally, one, the, kind of by the tree to the closest to the building about doing something right there could look kind of neat, because as you drive by, there could be some kind of feature there that kind of presents well with the rest of the buildings that surround that area in the creek.
So you would object if we had that to a condition, then?
It was something we can look at.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thanks, sir. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak with regards to this application?
Thank you.
Anyone? Okay. You want to have any comments or anyone wish to make a motion?
So are we going to add that number nine?
Actually eleven right now.
There's eleven now.
So, yeah, so the, we have the seven and then I added eight materials, a consideration of perhaps more twelve inch board batting siding. Nine, a revised plan to show a dumpster enclosure on the northern side. Ten, a, just a bubble development plan to show that the phasing and then eleven, a walkability component to connect the north to the south.
Well, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to consider to, to consider case number two zero two two eighteen Z to include, include the staff comments, which are number eleven comments.
Second to that one. Okay, any further comments? I, I guess I do. Quite frankly, I'm. My understanding is that the density allow all units per acres, fourteen and a half. And this is almost sixty percent higher. And I don't doubt that MSD's barrier to give approval is based upon those density numbers. I'm troubled by giving our approval or, or promotion of this project when MSD is standing in the way.
What I would say, I think the board is considering zoning matters and, and while.
Well, I consider sewage for MSD, sort of part of our job as zoning commissioner.
Certainly. What? The applicants have not made explicit remarks that, hey, if this gets, if this is not considered by the township, we're going to annex in the Sharon Miller Blue Ash. But certainly I think that's a consideration. With the surrounding, you know, higher business use, there, there is a, in this kind of micro area, there is a need for housing. I would, I would, you know, include that. Scott, did you have?
Yeah, I do. I, I would have to, I would have to search through the, the, the code to, to show you where this is at. But the, the density, the, the density limitation that, that you're, that you're referencing has to do with PUD twos as maximum. It is explicit in our zoning resolution that the trustees have the authority to, to grant excess density in the SP, excuse me, in the SPOD districts. So this is, this is the exact application process that the applicant, that the applicant would use to be granted that additional density. So you can advise the, the board of trustees on your, your opinion of that density and they can, they can take that into account. They ultimately do have to acknowledge that, that density increase and approve it at, at the proposed rate. But it is within the SPOD, the double B district that they have the authority to do that. So the applicant is following the correct process to, to receive that density. As far as MSD, MSD is the hallmark of MSD to, to be very conservative in their.
They have to be very conservative. They have to be under federal consent decree.
Absolutely.
There, there are a lot of strict requirements there and they don't cavalierly just say, well, you know, we're, we're not going to take a look at this.
Exactly. But as the, as the applicant stated, it's not so much the, the downstream issue as it is the immediate capacity. And it will be the responsibility of the applicant to manage the, the, the localized capacity issue. Downstream, it's managed. So it, it's a matter of, you know, it's a matter of getting it from point A to point C. They have to take care of that point B and make sure that, you know, there's no bottleneck in that, in, in that path. So those comments will need to be reviewed. You know, a, a condition that they meet the stipulations or the requirements of MSD could certainly be appropriate. But I wouldn't, I, I, the, the concerns of MSD are, are not, I, I don't believe that they were meant to be insurmountable. It was just an acknowledgement of the, the area capacity, not, not, not the final. I, I did not read those comments and saying that, that that capacity cannot be achieved. Let me put it that way. So they, they certainly do need to meet those standards. And, and I believe they can, you know, there's just localized infrastructure upgrades that need to happen. And the applicant's going to be responsible for that.
Scarlet, perhaps aspire and gallery is the most parallel case to this case. Did, did that case exceed the fourteen point five joint units an acre on every?
It didn't need, they were at.
Of course, every case is considered on certain merit.
So you recall, I wasn't actually part of the, the approval of that case, but in my review, I want to say they were over thirty-six units per acre and that was a calculation of the total site, not just, you know, that total mixed use site. It, it's, it's, it's the best. So it, it's, it's, it's the best comparison that we have because it's, because of how recent it is. But one's a mixed use site that is much more urban dense. You know, you have the hotel use, the, the, the office use. And we're almost using, if, if you take those elements out, the, the density was, well, there's two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty-eight units on, I want to say four and a half acres. So the, the density is getting pretty, pretty high at, at Aspire. You know, you add in that additional, additional land there and it looks better. This is, excuse me, three hundred and ninety-two. Yeah, three hundred and ninety-two over seventeen acres. So, you know, that, that twenty-two, twenty-two and change units per acre is, you know, not looking as, you know, as bad. Especially when we were looking at, at utilizing this site for, you know, a higher intensity office use to begin with. I should also note about the land use plan, since that was something that, that I brought up. The, the review of the, the land use plan was happening. It started pre-COVID and was, was going on during, you know, the, the kind of pandemic shutdown, if you will, and was approved shortly after. You know, I guess before we were seeing the realities of, of, of this new, you know, post pandemic environment. Our office market is, you know, I won't say nonexistent, but, but our markets have significantly changed, you know. I can't tell you today that, that we would make that same determination on, on Grooms Road. We would, you know, we would either be looking for a mixed use or, you know, we would try and, we would try and develop that site with more flexibility towards the property owners and not hold out for high density, you know, multi-story, you know, office. You know, that's been the township's bread and butter, if you will, especially in, you know, Kenwood and Long East Kemper Road. That, that is not the, you know, I, I, I think some of you can speak to it more than others, but that, that is not the environment that we're in now. It's a, we're in a different reality. This is a viable marketable development, which is one of the reasons why we're, we're making a recommendation forward with this.
My first reaction was like yours, it has to fourteen and a half kind of through me because I'm used to seeing all that. But I think after reading the staff report and looking at this particular site, I can see the justification for it. And, you know, that, not unlike what you're talking about too, down in more of an urban district, there's certainly grounds to do that. So I, even I, I was very concerned initially. It doesn't bother me. And I think as far as MSD, I don't think they're going to let anything go through that doesn't work.
Yeah. Chairman, you're, you're absolutely right. That is a, that is a serious development hurdle that has to be overcome as, as part of this process. The applicant acknowledges it. They realize that there's, there's localized infrastructure improvements that have to be made. I don't see it as insurmountable and I, I don't necessarily see it as a, as a barrier to the initial zoning approval. The applicant needs some assurance from the township that they can move forward before they can, you know, invest in the engineering and, you know, initial outlay to, to, to resolve that capacity issue. So lots of moving pieces, but I think this is the first step.
Okay.
To change a recommendation.
That's a good.
But it, it's good that we acknowledge it though. I, I think it was a good issue to be brought up. I think this is a simplification for, for color purposes as well. The larger scale version is quite, quite a bit more detailed.
Yeah, I, I was more split test on, on dwelling units per acre.
Yeah.
There's still a lot of green space here.
Okay, no other questions or comments? We have the force motion for us to consider this with the staff comments and recommendations at the end of the staff comments.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Hi.
Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Roots?
Hi.
Yes.
Okay, this goes before the trustees.
Yes, sir. Again, first meeting in February.
Okay. Thank you. Excited on the agenda. Trustees, everything they want to tell us?
Trustees do not. I'd like to, I'd like to take a moment if, if, if I could. First off, to, you know, again, welcome Mr. Ucott. I, I think he'll, he'll serve the township very well. And I, I'm glad that township was able to find someone to, to, you know, take on this position so quickly. Personally, I just want to say it's been a true honor and privilege to work with each of you. I say it every opportunity I can get that Sycamore Township has amazing zoning boards. The zoning commission, as well as the BZA, have, I, I think the most professional, you know, members of each group, the, the professionalism, the, the expertise, you know, just, just is absolutely phenomenal and is not matched anywhere else. So it was, it was a pleasure working with you all for three years. Thank you so much for, you know, you know, all that you do for the township.
Scott, I thank you for all of your effort to. What's your new position?
I have, I've been appointed as the Delhi Township Township Administrator. So, yeah, I'll, I, I took the top chair on the west side. Yeah. So very, you know, looking forward to it, very exciting. There's, there's actually a number of projects. I've already started, where I started working there kind of in my free time. I've already been attending the meetings. I'm going to hit the ground running. So my, my first official day will be there Thursday on the 12th. And, but my last day here is the 11th and I have to leave here and go straight to a trustee meeting. So they've been, they've been paying me in free lunches so far. Yep.
Okay. Our next meeting is February thirteenth?
Yes, sir.
Six P M. Nothing else?
I think we were supposed to go to office.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's January. So I didn't say campaign fire. So I moved that we left Roger Freeman as the chairperson for the mission for next year.
I'll have to take a look. Better than sixteen votes. Nominate that Mr. Reese as secretary.
Make sure I continue reading.
That's all. Do we, do we vote on a vice chair? Vice chair? Thank you all.
Now we can entertain the mood.
All right, the journey is eight forty-six.